Mr. President, I make a motion that we reach the vein in open session.
Second. Motion for second.
Davis, aye.
First, aye.
Statement by the town council president that no votes were taken in executive session. Consider and vote on.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we vote to seal the minutes of the executive session.
Motion for second, all in favor?
Burns, aye.
Davis, aye.
Moffett, aye.
First, aye.
Here he is. Thank you, councillors. Duty, they welcome the Hopkinton Town Council for October 7th, 2024. Start off with a moment of silence and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Scott. I ask everybody to put their phones on vibrate or shut them off. Thank you. All right, cool call. Councillor Moffett.
Here.
Councillor Davis.
Present.
Councillor Burns.
Here.
Councillor Hurst.
Yeah.
And I am here. Start off first, public comment. Hey, Brian, anybody online for public comment?
No, actually, no. There's two people online, but they're for other.
I wanted to wear my favorite sweatshirt.
I don't know why. But as long as you're not wearing a Patriots shirt, you're also room for the Cowboys this year.
Good evening, Joe Moreau, Old Divo Road. At the last council meeting I attended a while back, I told you that I would not see me at future meetings. Well, here I am. The only reason I am here tonight is to help a friend in need, and that would be Scott Billhurst. I first met Scott about six years ago at a meeting concerning what else solar proposals in our town. I was talking with Scott for a while after the meeting, and we were out in the parking lot, and one of the things I noticed was the condition of his car. And I knew that, at that point, I assumed that he was a hoarder. But we had a lot of good conversations since then. I was director of public welfare from 2020 to 2022. I helped Scott with some basic needs, which I'm not going to get into, but I could not help him with his housing needs. I tried to get him to sign into Canachia Cliff, and at that point, he refused to do that. I called Scott around this time last year to remind him about applying for heating oil assistance from Tri County Community Action Program. Told me he could not get an oil delivery because his oil tank was leaking. I asked Scott, what was he going to do about heat? And he said that he was going to buy a space heater. I told him, Scott, your pipes are going to freeze this winter, and you're going to have more problems in the spring if you do that. Sorry to say I was right about his pipes freezing. A few weeks back, I resigned from the charter commission. Scott and other council members had some nice things to say about myself. I called Scott to thank him for his comments, and I told him I was sorry to hear about his housing issues. I asked him to consider selling his house, and he said he wasn't ready to do that yet. In my opinion, it has been downhill ever since. That call. On August 9th of '24, a certified letter was sent to Scott regarding his property. September 6th, there was a special town council meeting was held to discuss the issues. As of Saturday, there was 192 views, which is incredible. And there was an issue, technical issue, so it's, the meeting is not with the rest of the meetings. It's a little bit separate on YouTube, and Brian explained that to me, and they're working to fix that. So in my opinion, if it was on the regular site with the rest of the meetings, you would have seen a lot more views about that. September 25th, there was an article written by Cynthia Drummond, Diva River Valley Community Association. Many, many people and organizations have helped Scott over the years. His current conditions are not something new. Sherry in building and zoning started working for our town in 2002, and there were issues then, and she said there were notices of violations to Scott from five different building officials. People may be listening to me right now at this point. I'm not trying to bash Scott in any shape or form. He's a friend of mine, and a friend has to help other friends, and that's my whole point of speaking tonight. I went there last week to see if Scott was there so I could help him clean his yard. There was trash all over the front and the back porch. There was two binders on the lawn with the operating budget from the town of Hopkinton. I went back to see if I could catch up with Scott. He wasn't around. I brought a rake and a shovel, and I was going to clean his yard myself. Then I thought about, that's not the right thing to do. You know, I'm really trespassing in that, so much as I wanted to do it, I didn't do it. At the September 6th special town council meeting, Chief Carrier, Anthony Santilli and Sherry from building and zoning were there. They talked about the issues. Anthony stated that Scott has been on the municipal court in the past with the same issues. I attended all of those hearings in municipal court to see if I could provide support to Scott while he was here alone. One of our police officers went to Scott's house to deliver a person item he'd lost. The front door was open, as it normally is, and the police officer on the body cam noted unsanitary, uninhabitable, any human occupancy on the body cam. Anthony Santilli went back and verified the facts himself, had a meeting at the police station with our town manager, chief of police, and councillor Gary. Certified letter was sent on August 9th. Unfortunately, I had to condemn the property. After the meeting, Scott stated he would clean. However, there's been very little progress since then. Officer Dasso, who was our elderly affairs officer, had reported that there were two or three inches of standing water on the main living area for over, at least over a year, with black mold on the walls, at least six inches of water in the basement. Officer Dasso arranged for Surf Pro to go to the house, and there was a quota $42,000, not counting removal of the drywall and flooring. And Officer Dasso, as I said, she's our elderly affairs officer, so she is trying to help. I won't get into the details, but I had a conversation with her today. I still think I'm the director of public welfare, but when you try to help a friend in need, you try to do that. After going several attempts to reach Scott, I could not reach him. I sent an email to about 12 people on Saturday. Basically, I said, hi, Scott, please, please give me a call. I have my phone number. I've tried three of your numbers with no success. Your mailbox is full. I sent a text to one of the numbers I called, and I listed the four different numbers I called. I'm trying to contact you for two reasons. I want to meet you at your house, clean your yard, empty the trash, and also empty the vehicle upstairs so we can get some cash. And I also said I want to discuss some of my concerns with you prior to the council meeting. I didn't want to hit him cold turkey. I had no, no response. And it leads to the questions of, if there's a resident in need, how do they get in contact with Scott at that point? On a side note, the town Republican committee had a meeting a couple of weeks back, and on one of the agenda items was a discussion about what they were doing for mailings prior to the elections. And Frank Lindolff, as you know, is the chair. And one of the items they talked about was not including, unfortunately, Scott's name on the mailings that they were doing. A vote was taken. One abstained, one voted in favor of his name, and the rest voted not to put his name. So my point by mentioning that is, his own party that he's supported all these years is not supporting him either, which is something new. The special council meeting on the 6th, the council voted to retain Special Counsel Wakefield Attorney Martha Day to represent building and zoning on feeding Ty Paul's advice. And I agree with that. It would have been a conflict of interest. We had to do the same thing for probate court. We had to hire an outside judge for that. Couple of more things. In my opinion, Scott, as a friend, you need to immediately resign from the council. I feel you need to withdraw from the race in November. You need to work on your own personal issues and start your recovery. Myself and others will help you as much as possible, but it starts with you, helping yourself. I can remember my grandfather ever since I could remember him telling me, Joey, God helps those that help themselves, and that's what you need to do. The information that I just presented came from my review of the minutes of the meeting, which Marina always does a great job, and also from reviewing the 9/6. I didn't take anything from Cynthia Drummond's article, although I've known Cynthia for many years, and she does report the facts. One of my last comments was, I want to talk about the town charter. I was on the Charter Review Commission along with Tom Buck, and I looked at, again, Section 1224, qualifications for elected office. And I know you've heard this before. It's different from appointments of boards and commissions. This is elected offices. All elected officers of the town shall be qualified electors of the town and shall be qualified as provided by this charter. And if any elected officer of the town ceases to be a resident of the town, the office held by that person shall become vacant. That's pretty clear. Today, I Googled Mr. and Mrs. Google as far as a resident. Definition that I had, a resident is a person who lives somewhere permanently or on a long-term base. A resident is a person's home, a place where someone lives. You know, this is, again, not to come down hard on Scott, but God forbid if someone had a fire in their house and they had to move to Wesley for a short term, we would allow that, and that's the right thing to do. Put a trailer on your property while the house is being rebuilt. That's the right thing to do. This has been going on since 2002, when Sherry started. In the 9/6 video, she mentions about, this has been going through five different building and zoning officials. So it's not something that's just happened recently. As of today, around 2:30, the trash is still over, all over the front yard. The vehicle is still loaded with trash. That is not fair to the residents of our town, especially that neighborhood. Just because one or two residents may speak tonight doesn't mean we're the only ones concerned. This topic is going around our town. It's unbelievable the amount of people that I've talked to that called me. It will be difficult, but our town officials need to deal with this situation. I know you have been. I'm not saying you haven't tried to deal with it, to do the right thing and to think about town. Last thing, I heard this a little while ago. You can't rest on the past. You need to look forward to the future. And you try to do that. You know, and I hear people say, well, Scott, and he's done. He has done a lot of great things over the years. He's helped out a lot of people. But it's time for Scott to help himself. That's all I have to say. And Scott, I hope you, you listen. I know, and the reason why I'm saying this now, as I said, I tried to reach Scott, I could not get a hold of him. I talked to him before the meeting started, and I tried to give him a heads up. I did not want to hit him cold turkey with this. I've spoke to members of the council about it also, but I'm strongly urging you to ask me for help, ask people in this room. Many people will help you out, Scott, but take two years off, come back strong, and you'll be a much better person. Consider yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have a public comment?
Carolyn Light, 43 Forest Glen Drive. Scott's legacy for all of his presence here on the town council is amazing, and his commitment to the community is amazing. Scott, my concern is that you're tainting your legacy. I would rather see Scott do one of the things that I think he is well-known for, and that's the town historian. There's a place for that information, and it's only captured in Scott. I think time off and time for Scott to take care of Scott is where we're at. There's not a mean bone in my body. I don't want to see anything bad happen here, but I know that everybody, me including from experience, needs to take a step aside every once in a while, regroup, and figure out exactly where we need to be. Now, for the town of Hopkinton, Scott, and this is, this is where your heart is at, and I know it. You want this town to have a council that can fairly and honestly represent the residents. The way you could help do that is to step down. I don't like the language that's out there about this right now. If he can't take care of himself, how the hell could he be on the town council? I don't like that language, Scott. I think there's more and better legacy for you. And I use that word legacy passionately because this is how my husband and I choose to make decisions. We have children, we have grandchildren, and those controversial crazy things that we might do every now and then all come down to our legacy, and what do we want our kids to talk about? And they're big in their little things. I think you're a special person, and I think you need to take care of yourself, be a special person. The environment that you have been living in is a toxic environment. That isn't just attacking you. Anybody living in those conditions is going to have physical deterioration and damage from it. You need to take care of you and not let that stop you from landing on your legacy the way that you choose to do it. I've reached out to the Board of Canvases, and I've reached out to the Board of Elections, and I know that there are people sitting here with you, Scott, that have asked you to please step down. I would be proud of you if you did. Thank you for hearing me, and. See you soon.
Thank you, Carolyn. Anybody else have a public comment? Or anybody online? All right.
I'll be very, very.
Sure, go ahead, please. Just state your name and address, please.
Justin Bentley, 138 Maxon Hill Road. I'm, I'm going to sort of piggyback off of the earlier two speakers, but I'm not going to go as far as asking Scott to step down. I just wanted to state that I am the, I'm honored to be on the Hopkinton Democratic Town Committee. And I, unfortunately, I've tried to reach out to Scott a few times, and I'm just going to ask that, I've tried to contact Scott through email, through phone calls. I know there's a lot going on. I haven't received a response, but speaking on behalf of the Democratic Town Committee, we want to, as Carolyn Light just said of Scott, we want what's best for the town. We want to work with everyone to do good things for the town. Councilman Burns, you and I have spoken several times, and I appreciate the fact that you're able to listen. We can have dialogue back and forth, and I truly appreciate that. And that's not just with me. It appears you're that way with everyone, which is why, even as a Democrat, I'll vote for at least one Republican. Oh, that's on tape. Oh, no. But I, I do appreciate that, and I just would ask that, I have a problem with recently the disparaging remarks and the falsehoods that were made about the Hopkinton Democratic Town Committee. Instead, I would ask that you had reached out to us because much of what Councilman Hurst had said was false and not true, and I question the motives. I would like to think that everyone on the council has the town in their best interest and wants the town to be successful, and I just feel making disparaging remarks about the committee that mostly were false, and even dragging family members of other councils in repeatedly despite being asked not to do so is just, it's unprofessional, it's unbecoming, and I would hope for, for better than that. So I'd ask you, Scott, to please maybe refrain from doing that, and I would ask that each of the other council members to maybe kind of help Scott in doing that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else have a public comment? Going once, going twice, three times? All right, move forward. Approval of the agenda order? Come on, get with everybody else.
Yeah.
Consent agenda. Approved town council meeting minutes of September 16th, 2024. Approved town council executive session minutes of September 16th, 2024. Approved refunds submitted to, submitted by the tax collector. Approved waiver of interest submitted by the tax collector.
I make a motion, Mr. President, that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion on the floor, second. All in favor?
First, aye.
Davis, aye.
Moffett, aye.
Here he is. Thank you, councillors. All right, move forward. Discuss and consider possibly vote to appoint Lois Morris to the Economic Development Commission.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion on the floor, second. All in favor?
Davis, aye.
Burns, aye.
Moffett, aye.
Here he is. Thank you, people. Thank councillors. Number two, discuss and consider possibly vote to appoint Elaine Morgan to the local RI 250th Commission.
Still moved.
Is she here?
You know, I like to say.
Hold on.
That's what I was trying to figure out. This whole thing is a bunch of blowing, specifically because this town council appointed at least two people to this committee without even interviews, and you're making a stink or holding back to put Elaine Morgan on, who's a state senator, a well-known person, and you already appointed two people without even an interview. And, and the inconsistency of this council in dealing with appointment process, not interviewing some, but still appointing them. So I'm going to make a motion, I think I just made a motion. I move that we appoint Elaine Jane Morgan to the local RI 250th Commission. I make that a motion. I want it to be a part of the record, even if it doesn't get a second. Thank you.
Motion on the floor? It's a retort, your, your retort, your thing, Scott. Past town councils have done it. We did it when we came in. I did. Going forward, I want to see whoever it is we are nominating, even though we know who it is, we just want to get a feeling, same way we did with the executive session, to have that person here so we can at least say with that.
I think it's respect for their.
It's respect for constituents.
This is a state representative, who, Senator, excuse me, who, by the way, I know quite well.
We all do.
But all we ask is to come to a council meeting, to show up, to voice your reasons why, what your history is. I mean, same thing we just did with an interview a couple of minutes ago. I think it's only right, and this is my opinion, that whoever we vote onto these boards and commissions.
It's a reflection of us.
You're voting on people that I've never seen in my life. I don't even know their faces. Don't get me wrong. Your old timers, with no disrespect, have sat on this town council and know these people's faces. I don't know them if I walk by them in the grocery store or the gas station. Is that fair to me to vote somebody in just because you want them in, or you want them in?
That's not the point. The point is that this town council is inconsistent.
Well, we're going to be.
Within the last 30 days or 60 days, they've appointed people to boards and commissioners on an interview, and you have a well-known person, and you, you won't appoint her. I want my motion to stand, and I wanted the permanent records of this town that I couldn't get a second, if that's the case. Because, you know, consistency, that's, that's one thing that does your credibility in government. So I make that a motion. I wanted the permanent records of this town, and you can explain to the people of this town, the last 60 days, you've appointed people you didn't even interview, and then you have a well-known personality in town, and you want to appoint them without an interview. That inconsistency speaks for itself. Thank you.
Motion on the floor, is there a second? Motion fails to pass.
Was there a second?
No.
Okay.
Marina, could you reach out to the Senator and say, can you make it to the next so we can resolve this and we can be consistent? All right, moving forward. Discuss and consider possibly vote to appoint Harvey Buford to the Wood Pocketuck Wild and Scenic Stewart Council.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion on the floor, second. All in favor?
First, aye.
Davis, aye.
Burns, aye.
Moffett, aye.
Here he is. Harvey, can't say it enough, I want to thank you for what you've done in the past. I want to thank you, we all want to thank you, excuse me, for stepping up and getting involved again. Buying coffee, you're buying coffee at Comby's. All right, new business. Number one, discuss and consider possibly vote to contract change to the bid award to Bosale. Bosale Brothers Incorporated for additional work in the Crandall Field funded by ARPA Funds.
So this was a project that I'm sure you're familiar with. We previously discussed it a few times. It's already been allocated through the ARPA funds. We held off on moving forward this project for a while because we had hopes of getting a DEM grant, a recreation grant that was going to fund the project almost in its entirety besides the match. Unfortunately, and if that happened, we were going to be able to reallocate the ARPA funds to another project that the council so chose, you know. That didn't happen. We found out that we did not get that funding through DEM, that grant. So the rec department and myself, Public Works, have been working with Bosale. They've recently refinished the tennis court. We were very happy with the work they've done. The, so we've had discussions with our auditors. We thought that if the council was comfortable with doing a contract change and increasing the scope of work, allowing them, because they did similar scope of work. They did the fence for the tennis court, and they refinished the tennis court. So we're looking to refinish the basketball court and put a fence around the playground. So the reason that we're trying to maybe somewhat expedite this process now is for two reasons, right? One is the seasons. So if they need to get equipment in there, we know how wet it gets over there at Crandall Field. So if we could expedite this process, they could get in there and get this work done this, this year in the next couple of months. If we go out to bid, again, we don't know what comes back with those bids. They were the previous low bidder. Again, so they gave us very reasonable rates and were consistent with their contract changes. The other thing is the expiration of the ARPA funds, too. So we have to have something under contract. That I think we could do, but again, we'd be waiting until spring of 2025, and, and actually, I don't even think that's doable because it's so wet in the spring. So we'd probably be waiting until this time next year to actually see this project done. So we're trying to, trying to get it done, close the loop on the ARPA funds. You know, again, this, this project's been talked about many times. We've decreased the scope slightly from what we previously were doing. Before, we were going to put a drainage system that was designed to crossmen under the basketball court, but without that grant, it's, it's just too much of a substantial cost. The drainage system was going to actually be more than the renovation of all the basketball court and the paving of the new basketball court, and it was going to be, it was going to be about the same amount for the drainage system. So instead of doing a full rehab, we were thinking that it would be in the best interest of the town to kind of get through it without spending the, you know, the, on the large sum of money on the drainage system and a full rehab. So this would be a refinishing of the court, new hoops, and if anyone's been down there recently or in the last year or two, those hoops are historically hideous, and they're, they're getting worse. You know, the, the poles are leaning, the hoops, and it's, I don't know, it's just a shame. I see kids down there. I brought my kids down a couple of weeks ago, and there were some kids playing on it, and I, I just remember growing up playing there and kind of have like a personal attachment to it because I grew up playing there, and it, it's a shame to see, you know, backboards hanging off the poles, and it would just be nice to be able to get that functioning so kids in the community would be able to use it again.
Can you, can you go over these?
Yep.
Three estimates because they don't make sense, so.
Okay, so.
You know, start with 130 and work backwards.
Okay.
I assume 130 was originally for 67.5.
Yep, that's for the refinishing, disposal, removal, basketball hoops exist, for existing hoops, backboards, poles, and footing, recoloring, crack repairs, cleaning, coloring, line striping. So this would be similar to what we did with the, so if you've been out. So this would be similar to what we did with the, so if, if you've been out there, we were on site, you know. We're pretty much there quite a bit, but, um, there's pretty wide, you know, six-inch cracks, um, through the core, um, and they kind of spider throughout the core. Um, but after speaking with Bosale, they think that the current meshing system that they did on the tennis court would be the best approach. Um, if we tried to get in there and actually dig up the, the court and put down and pave new, it would be a lot more expensive. Um, so that just did not seem feasible. Um, this current, that, that would be ideal, but again, it's gonna come with a cost. This scenario, um, although not ideal, it would, it would get us, um, an estimated eight years before those cracks started showing. Um, and again, you know, I can't be quoted on that, but that's what I'm being told by the contractors, that.
All right, so estimate 129, is that 25,800?
Yep.
But that's not true, right?
Yep, that's for the, uh, the fencing around the new ten, uh, new playground.
So is that the thing, instead of 25,850, is that what you're now thinking is 14,971?
Nope. No, no, that's all, I'm sorry. Th- this was not labeled. So that's for the new hoop system, new poles. So originally, we thought we were gonna be able to use the existing poles, but we had someone come out and inspect them from J Pro. Apparently, they're, they're fracturing on the concrete at the base of them, and a couple of the poles are leaning. So we were hoping to get away with just using the existing poles, but now we're gonna have to get new pole systems in there, um, with new backboards and rims. That's, that's what the, the 14,971 is.
All right.
And I, I, I should have provided that. I think I did, actually.
Yeah, you did, but.
Yeah, yeah.
But what I'm, I'm trying to figure out, what are we agreeing to? Because what you have on the bottom of 130, uh, is 85,000. I'm trying to figure out how you got to 85,000.
So that's, that's for the, the repair of the core?
Is it the, wait, wait, is it the 67,500?
Yes.
Plus the 14,971?
Plus 2,800, which was for the cementing of the new poles.
All right, so what, what is estimate 129 and 128?
So 129 is, 129 is for the four-foot, uh, black vinyl fence around the existing playground. Just like it says, add four-foot-high black vinyl fence around existing playground.
So, so all of this is like 116,000 that you're asking for?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Which is all covered, again, by the ARPA money.
Okay.
I think we had a substantial amount more, but I think this is gonna free up some ARPA money, if, if anything.
All right.
Because we are going with the.
116.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right.
And then the, the last one was for, um, extending the walkway to the playground and also, um, fixing, repairing, because the branch hit the fence and bent the poles. Um, so they, they went out and repaired that, I, I believe, two poles and patched the fencing. That was bent.
All right, so I was right, was around 115 or 116? Is that right?
Yes, if I fit, did the math right.
Yeah, I just wanna write it down.
I didn't totally.
6,500 plus 25,850.
Hold on. 6,500 plus.
25,850.
It's 117,621.
And then, um, and then 85,271? I think. Matt adds, that gets that 14,971.
So just to put in perspective, the drainage system, I think, originally was quarter that way, 250,000. Yeah, so the drainage system alone was 250.
You buy two more basketball.
Yeah, 6,500 plus 25,850 plus, I'm gonna say 85,271.
Right, you just gave me the total, 117.
621.
117. 621?
Yep.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Of course, ma'am.
So. Yeah, I'm fine.
Longer overdue, let's get it fixed. We got the money.
Yeah, I agree with you on that. So do we have to make a motion to?
Yes.
We make a motion to, um.
Uh, Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the contract change to bid award to Bosale Brothers for additional work at Crandall Field funded by ARPA funds.
Motion on the floor, second, all in favor?
First, I.
David's eye.
Brian's eye.
Moffat eye.
Brian, thank you for all you've done with this, uh, this stuff here with the ARPA money.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's made everything, everything a little bit better in town, so thanks.
Trying to spread it.
I know, I know, I know, I know, I get it, too. All right, new business, too. Discussing, consider possibly vote to approve adding a waterline connection for Little Beginnings, Seven Mechanic Street. Sylvia, did you wanna talk real quick?
The application, so I'm gonna elaborate.
Okay, sure.
No, um, uh, Scott had called me just before the meeting, uh, to let me know that the waterline was on the agenda. Um, I've got a little bit of a cold, so my voice might be a little off. Um, back in 19, and I don't have COVID, it's just a cold. Um, back in 1991, uh, the town council asked me to, um, get the waterline done. And, uh, so we studied it, and we, after, uh, it took a few years, but we got the waterline in. Since then, we have, for your, um, uh, I wanna make sure you know, we have a Hope Valley Waterline Ordinance, which spells out what can and can't be done. We have the Waste Water Management District Ordinance, which spells out what can and can't be done. There is the Water Conservation Ordinance. And, um, one of the things that we had to do, um, i- in the beginning was we had to have an environmental review done. Now, this is a, a short little extension down, uh, that's being proposed down Mechanic Street, so I don't know if environmental review would be required. But you may need, you certainly would need approval from Richmond. And, uh, they have an abundance of water, so I don't think they, they care. Um, they'd be happy to, uh, have another, uh, user on, on, on their, uh, lines, so they get more money. So I don't think Richmond would, but you, you would need approval from Richmond. You might also need approval from the PUC, DEM, Water, Water, Water Resources Board. And then, of course, there's the funding issue. So what I would recommend to you is not to vote on this, but if you wanna pursue this, you need to pursue it through study and look at these, all of these different, um, um, what would be required to do the extension? Would you, would you need an environmental review? So you, you know, you'd have to talk to Water Resources Board, DEM, and, uh, and I, and I, I don't know if the PUC would be involved because you've already got a fee structure in, in line. So that, those are the things I wanted to bring up to you tonight. Um, and, uh, it, it also requires that any extension, uh, right now, the waterline, everyone in, that's in the waterline, and it's part of the ordinance, um, cannot exceed, um, uh, I'll take an example. If there is a home and they wanted to put an, uh, another bedroom onto their house, they can't exceed, they couldn't add, uh, uh, a, a new septic system. Uh, they, uh, they can't build a house in the back. You can't, uh, because when, when you bring water into an area, it can increase development because you, you don't have to worry about the distance between, uh, water and your well and your, and your, uh, septic system anymore. So it can increase development, but there are protections in the Hope Valley Ordinance that do not allow for increased development. Um, I know that years ago, um, when Jeff Marchant was doing the community development block grant funds for the town and working on that, he looked at, um, there was a real need for, uh, there are needs, uh, 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 around town. One of the needs was on side lane, which he, he was looking at extending the waterline down Mechanic Street to get it to, to a side hill for those, um, houses that are in there. And he found out there just wasn't the money for it. But he also wanted to, uh, then, uh, once that, he was hoping that once the waterline did go in, if they could find funding, that the Woodmansey Building would, could become affordable housing. And that's why, that's the last thing we wanna do to a sensitive area, to a floodplain, is add more, uh, housing. So i- if there is gonna be any extension, you wanna make sure that you include the Hope Valley Ward, uh, Line Ordinance that protects any extension from, uh, further development. So those are my comments.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Sylvia, for the insight.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
On the, the Little Beginnings, what is that?
Can I speak to this?
Please.
Yeah.
I don't know why, yeah, I didn't speak first. I mean, I probably should have explained.
It's always good to hear somebody that's got a little history.
Right, of course, but a lot of the questions would have been answered because the Richmond Town Council already approved this, for one. Um, so they, they did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Sylvia.
So at the last council meeting.
So this is going back several months now. Um, the owner of the, um, Brooke, who's, who's gonna speak in a minute.
Isn't there a water area there to that? You're talking.
Yeah, so there, because now, uh, Department of Health is, is considering them a, a public water system. So they have, she basically is handcuffed, but, so she's having to do bottled water because they can't operate off her well. So she has this, uh, daycare, which she's trying to expand because there's a real need in the community.
Which is in the building right next to the fires.
Exactly. Yep, yep. So she's gonna be working with the fire department. I mean, that's all on her. That's not the town, and she's gonna, she's been aware that she's gonna have to get funding on her own. Um, you know, that's not, I told her that this was not something the town was gonna be able to fund because it's an enterprise system. So all we're looking to do is give her authorization to be able to add. In the past, when this happens, generally, it really is Richmond's decision, right? As, uh, um, Sylvia alluded to. So we followed the ordinance to a T. I actually sent her the ordinance along with Karen Pinch, and her and I have had multiple emails and meetings, um, with Department of Health on this. Um, so we followed all the, the rule, you know, followed the ordinance to a T. They already got Richmond's approval at the last council meeting. So then it kind of has been a formality on our part, you know. It's like, why would we be opposed? It's there, they did the testing to make sure that they had the capacity to add her. So they had a study done, uh, by their waterline manager to make sure that they could, because it's their water, right? So, um, that's why they did the appendix A. If you go to the ordinance, our contract with Richmond, there's an appendix, which has a list of Platte lots that are allowed to be added to the waterline. So if you're, if you're on that list, it's a whole different process. You don't, it really doesn't need council approval. They just fill out an application, submit a fee, and there's a whole set of guidance on the, the town website and the ordinance stating how that's done. This is a little bit separate because she's not on that appendix A, so she's not one of those original properties. So again, there's guidance on how that's handled. And Sylvia is absolutely right. This goes to the Richmond Town Council. They do a feasibility study. If, if their council approves it, why would we not, right? I mean, that, it's really just a, we're just a pass-through. And again, all the cost is falling on her to connect to the existing waterline.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, if, if all the homework and all the, you know, all, everything's been done. Richmond gave her a thumbs up. I'm fine with it. I think it's very good that she enlightened us on some of this stuff.
Sylvia is the expert, for sure, without a doubt. I wish I.
Couple historians in the room tonight. Tom Buck, Eddie James, Sylvia, and Scott. I'm good. Counselors, you got any questions? I think it's excellent.
Do you wanna speak to her at all?
She'd like to, yes.
I'm gonna give her permission to talk. Brooke, if you're there, uh, I think if you, I think you should be able to speak.
Hold on, bud.
Okay, there we go.
Hello? Is this working?
How you doing?
Hi.
I feel like I'm on a phone call right now.
Right.
So I just gave a, a brief overview of the situation, but maybe you could give a little more detail to the council on what you're trying to do and, and your, um, your daycare facility.
Yes, um, of course. Um, I mean, without going into too much detail, um, I, I opened one of the first daycares in the area with infant care. Um, I actually might still be one of the, the only ones with infant care. I think there's a couple of home daycares. Um, and now I plan to open the school age care for before school and after school, as well as the summer, um, which I've heard from so many families, my current families, and I, I can't even count the number of, of emails I get weekly for, for all ages, just in dire need of care. Um, and they're saying the, the, the school age is a big one. Um, but the main thing is, I tried to expand. I bought the building next door. Um, I own Seven Mechanic Street. I owned that first, and then I bought Five Mechanic Street to expand. It's a bigger building. Um, I could have more than double the students I have at Seven Mechanic Street. Um, and obviously, we ran into a bunch of issues there, but i- in doing that, and now with this water issue, with not having the public water system, not only is it affecting being able to expand, it's also affecting my current daycare, which we have about 30 children now. Um, I would have to go down to, I'd have to get rid of some of my families that, like, they'd have to find new care. So, so that's, that's one of the, one, one of the biggest things. If I, if I couldn't expand, I'd be, I'd be sad, but having to let go of some of my loyal families and have them just have to find new care at the drop of a hat would, would be horrible. So I'm just trying to, to do this, um, just like Brian said, I, I, it is, the, uh, fee and everything, the, uh, cost is falling on me. Um, I'm just looking to get approved, to be able to, um, connect to it, um, so that I can continue with Seven Mechanic Street, um, the 30 or so children I have now, and hopefully expand to Five Mechanic Street, um, and add the school age and a couple more, um, classrooms to what I already have.
Again, it was all.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks, Brooke.
Of course.
Sylvia, has any of us changed your mind about, uh?
I would, um, I would, uh, suggest that you find out right now what DEM, um, there. I didn't realize that she bought the old Madison Building. That's where she wants to put it? Right. So I would, uh, like, it, it would remove the council, even though it's a DEM issue. Find out what's allowed, what kind of septic system that they have. And, and sometimes it's limited to a certain number of people. So we would wanna find out whether or not she can really even expand and have that many kids. So, um, what, what is the, what is the permit say on that property? That would be worth it, find out before she spends any money.
Yeah, Mr. President. Mr. President, hold on. Do you have anything to add to that?
No, I was talking to Brian, I'm sorry.
No, uh, she's concerned about what, the septic?
Yeah.
So I, I'd have to ask, uh, I, I mean, I'm not privy to what her.
Yeah, I understand. I mean, she's just asking to hook up the water line.
Yeah, I think DOT is heavily involved in this, so I doubt they're gonna go approve something that's.
DEXB or the.
Uh, uh, I'm sorry, did I say, uh, DOH? Sorry.
Mr. President, hold on.
Um, Brooke, did, have you had any contact with, um, with, uh, DEM about the septic?
Um, I did in the beginning, and then now, I think the next step, after I got approval from both towns, Richmond and Hopkinton, was to get the septic pumped at both, um, both buildings.
Yeah, that's part of the process. There's a.
Mr. President. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion, table this to the next meeting, to allow our town manager.
Building inspector.
Building inspector, um, all officials, look in, make sure that we're not making a decision on something hasty, just make sure that everything goes well.
Motion for.
I second that.
Motion for, second in all, favor.
First eye.
Davis eye.
Am I giving up time, Brian?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll work with Brooke to get.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Here, aye. Motion passed, we're going to table this to the next meeting.
Did I say, did I say this thing?
Yeah. All right. Yeah, so let's get all the answers before we go forward, that's all. Unfinished business, discuss and consider and possibly vote on a motion to either approve or reject the amendment in the Code of Coordinances, Chapter twelve point, chapter thirteen point five, Planning and Development, to add section thirteen point five dash one. Guys, guys.
Excuse us.
Excuse us. Section thirteen point five dash one, town planning board introduced, sponsored by myself.
I make the motion that we approve the amendment.
A second. Motion for, second. Discussion, all in favor?
Burns aye.
Davis aye.
Moffett aye.
First aye. Here aye.
We discussed it last time, I guess.
We had a workshop on it.
We had a public hearing on it, um.
Yeah, but it's still, we listen, so, we, where does the basis start?
Good luck.
Hold on.
Tom, this was, this was, this was the discussion that we had the night that you were in presenting the charter amendments, and we had the discussion about, uh, moving this information from the charter to the ordinances.
It's, it.
We go.
Okay.
Thank you.
End of discussion. Motion for, all right, good to go. So, where do we leave off?
Town manager report.
Wait, did you vote, did you vote on the, on the ordinance?
We did. We did.
Okay.
All right. How did we vote? Are you confused in there? All, we're all in favor? Good? All right, move forward. Town manager's report, update regarding.
Town manager's report, excuse me. Yeah, so, I've been in contact, um, with some of the council members about.
Brian, can you go up to the mic?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I was going to try to do it here. So I was gonna present some stuff, I'll just jump back. Um, so, uh, to follow up on the request of the council, um, with the help of Representative Kennedy, uh, there was a request to install a traffic signal on the intersection of Ashway Road, Route two sixteen, and on Bradford Road. Studies were done, um, by the State Traffic Commission, and they came back, um, with a finding, uh, stating that, that it was approved, uh, the traffic signal, um, um, so that's the good news, that they approved the traffic study. If the council wants to move forward with it, um, it was approved by the, the commission. Um, the, the downside is that, uh, the state does not have anticipated funding, um, available until FY twenty eight for this, so they're looking at about three point five years away before the money will be allocated for installation. So it's, it, it was approved, but it's, yeah, I mean.
Twenty twenty eight?
Yeah, FY twenty eight, yeah. And, and we'll have conversations with them going forward, um, on, on seeing if that's something that we could try to expedite and move up the priority list. I think Representative Kennedy would be a good ally in that, because I know he works very closely with DOT on, um, on a lot of their road matters.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I mean, if we could, maybe we can just do a, you know, a, a email to him on that. Also, too, I know you're working on, working on trying to get the minutes and the conversation where the state gave it a thumbs up for a light up here at the end of two sixteen, Route three, you know? Not to be greedy, but, hey, let's go ahead and drive it while we can, so.
Yup.
That'd work.
Yup, we'll, we'll get that information. I'll put it in the next council package. I know, um, I'll touch base with the chief tomorrow, because I know we had conversations about those records. Um, the Chief Palmer, I believe, had, I've had discussions with him a couple of years ago about that study. Um, so I know that he has them readily available somewhere, so we'll, we'll touch base and, and get you guys copies of that.
Thank you, Brian.
So good news, but timing wise, not, not great.
Yeah, we'll get somebody out there with a, a sign or something, you know, maybe, maybe Finesse can get down there with a stop sign or something. Traffic guard, instead of, instead of bus guard, you'd be traffic guard. There you go. That's it.
So the.
Well, can he finish up his report?
Well, this is the, the traffic light, just that. You, is it still talking about it?
No, we don't, the traffic light.
I think.
Yeah, go ahead, talk, speak real soon.
Okay, um, just an FYI, um, Chief Palmer did bring that up at Route three and two sixteen, and that was shot down by the council.
Why?
Due to the residents. Residents, when it came up, the residents didn't want to have, it was a blinking light at the time.
Yeah, yeah.
So they didn't want to see it in their window. Um, so we just.
Hold the screen.
That's why they put the lights, the, um, stop signs.
In the street.
And they're, they're backed up down almost to where you enter Crandall Field. And as far as I know, that basically stopped the accidents right there, that. Okay. But that, that's what, that's what.
So you're clear, that study was done on the other side.
Sure, there's plenty of people that would like to talk about.
We're talking about the other stuff.
Yes, yes. Mike was just said that if we can get one for this end.
Yeah, okay.
Grab the money while we can, but I just want to make sure that you knew that.
Yep, I did, that's why.
Just an FYI that.
Thank you, Tom. Gotcha, yup. Um, so, we've got some good news on the grant activity. So the town was approved through the State Municipal Road and Bridge Program. Um, we're going to get a hundred and eighty four thousand, uh, to add to our roadwork next year, um, which is, um, we were recently approved for that, so there's a match on it, but we've already got, um, the funding available for that, and we're already in the process of doing, scheduling out our roadwork for the spring, um, with the remaining funds from last year and the bond funds, I'm sorry, remaining funds from, from two years ago that were approved, and then the bond funds from last year. So, we have to, we have a, a match, but again, we're going to exceed that match just based on the work we already have, uh, you know, scheduled. So, um, we haven't got into the details of the roadwork itself, but I just wanted to make you all aware that it was, we got approval for the, the match from the state. So that was a hundred and eighty four thousand, which is always nice. I mean, if we're going to do the work anyways, um, to, to get an extra hundred and eighty four thousand dollars, you know, maybe we get another road or two done.
I do have one question. Any updates on the Chaseville Bridge? I was asked that today by a constituent.
Uh, Chase, you mean? The Culver?
Yeah, the bridge right there by Grills, but right there, where does it go, or?
Are you talking about Tomacog?
No.
The shape shut, the one down on two sixteen.
Oh, oh, okay.
Director, could you?
Yeah, yeah, sure. Yeah, I was.
I haven't been notified of anything at this time.
Okay.
Uh, last I was told they were waiting on, uh, funding.
Got a lot of money. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Director. Yeah. Brian, you're up.
And the, so we also were awarded the twenty twenty four M R P grant, um, for this year, which is excellent. Um, there was nineteen applications, totaling eleven million, approximately five million was allocated, and the town got, um, four hundred and sixty two thousand dollars, uh, and that is for the repair of the Canachit Culver, uh, the, because we're, we're planning on doing some roadwork on Canachit, um, which we all know is much needed. Um, so that's, again, um, high on the priority list that Beta, uh, produced for us. So we're looking at doing some work out there, so this will really dovetail nicely with that, because if we're going to do the roadwork out there, we're, we're going to get the Culver replaced as well. Um, so, we got, um, four hundred and sixty two thousand, we, that's for the construction of the Culver. Um, I've got another grant application out through the Oscar Grant, uh, Fund, to try to, uh, get the engineering portion. Um, so we'll, we'll be able to get the engineering covered and the construction, so fingers crossed on that, and I'll, I'll keep you posted once we hear, um, either way on that, because, um, you know, the, the engineering portion is pretty significant as well, so if we, if our hands are tied on, you know, if, it, it doesn't really help us too much if we have the construction costs, but we don't have the engineering cost. So we're hoping that we get that Oscar grant so that we can get the engineering cost as well.
Brian, it's always good when we grab up free grant money and, uh, we can.
I have another question.
Yeah.
Are the, are those signs new on Tomacog Valley Road? The four ton signs?
Yes.
So that was something I was going to put on the next agenda as well, so we can do the, the study on Tomacog Valley Road. Um, we'll, we'll discuss that next time. Um, and what's the last thing? Oh, so, the reason I brought the animal control building up, um, we've got an estimated timeline for completion. Uh, the contractor, Bruce Raymond, believes he'll be done with the project around the beginning of November, so November first. Um, again, that, things could happen, that could maybe delay that, um, but that's the estimated, uh, timeline on that. Uh, let me find my, sorry, I got a lot of stuff going on tonight. There it is. Um, so the, the, one of the things that we were discussing at, at the previous council meeting was doing some sort of like grand opening or, or ceremony, and, you know, you know, paying homage and, and, uh, respect to, uh, Velma Clinton, who was the one that was able, that funded, um, through her donations, we were able to fund this project. So one thing that we've been working on is doing a plaque, um, for the building, um, but when we were looking at it, I was like, I think I need some help on maybe the language. Um, I just felt like I shouldn't be the one to come up with that language, and I kind of wanted some feedback, uh, from the council as to what it should say. I can show you kind of an example of what other ones look like and kind of give some suggestions, but again, I don't think that's really my.
Well, maybe we could just reach out to, I know she, correct me if I'm wrong, I know she didn't have a lot of close family, but I think the people that came in originally, uh, seemed very close, maybe we can get in touch with them, bounce some ideas off of them. I mean, they seem to know her a lot better than the five of us.
Right, again, I mean, I, I could come up with some kind words, but I thought it should be kind of more of a think tank than, than me just coming up with language, so I didn't want to.
So what was the date? He was thinking sometime in November fifteen?
Yeah, I, I think, no, yeah, so he, I think the, the R F P gave him a hundred and eighty days, so it was till the end of November, uh, to complete it, um, which obviously, if there was hiccups, we would have worked with the contractors, obviously unforeseen things, but he's on pace to finish, uh, November first, so, you know, barring any setbacks, um, obviously, as you know, like, the closer you get to completion on these projects, the less hurdles or unknowns. You know, this is like, you know, materials are ordered at this point, they're kind of on, on the final steps of the interior. You know, it's not like we're going to find some structural issue at this point, like, those kind of happen early on in the, in the process, um, all those contingencies, so at this point, there should not be, uh, you know, knock on wood, uh, it should be pretty predictable, at least as far as timeline and completion date, so.
Excellent. Anybody else got anything for the town manager?
No, they're doing a nice job over there, long as I ask. Once again, something about the entrance way, where they're unrevealing.
Yup. Yeah, it's on the radar, yup.
Other than that, I, I think they're doing phenomenal over there.
So the, the next meeting, I was going to bring this up again, just to get it, we could maybe discuss having a date set for the opening, um, because by then, we'll have a pretty solid date, I think, um, you know, two weeks from now, I think he'll know whether he's going to be able to get that completed, so we try to get it on everyone's schedule and get it.
Yeah, try to do it, because by that time, what, it would be into daylight savings time, so it'll get dark at what, four thirty, maybe we could do like a three, three thirty, something like that, so everybody kind of gets the idea, and then it's way, don't anybody walk around flashlights or something.
Sure.
Get an idea.
Okay.
Something like that. All right, thank you. Anybody else with town manager? All right, public comment.
No score.
Joe Moreau, I just wanted to end on a positive note. I want to thank everyone that was involved in the fundraiser this past Saturday at, uh, Crandall Field. It was nice to see so many of our town residents there. Uh, Captain Carrier was there, along with other, several other police officers, David Caswell, um, Ed James, I saw Gene and, uh, Ron Perlwitz, I'm sure other people showed up, but it was, it's kind of a sad, but a nice day when I saw the, the son, um, who was involved in this, and he was running around smiling, playing with his friends that hasn't seen for quite a while, as they're living in Old Sabre. But, uh, I want to thank everyone that was involved in that. It was perfect weather, so I thank Mark Surrills for that, from Channel ten.
Rec Department.
Rec Department, well, thank the Rec Department also. I think they have the Boy Scouts there directing traffic.
Yup.
Chief, you have some competition. Those Boy Scouts, boy, they were, they were really good out there. Thank you.
Hey, Joe, I got three things before we bow out. Joe kind of stole my thunder. Nah, it's okay, Joe, you beat me to it. I, again, I just want to reiterate, but there was everybody who was involved in memorial service, staff, Mary, I can't, I don't know how many people I saw there, the fire department, uh, all the trucks over there, the kids really got a good kick out of the truck, actually friends of ours lost, did lose their son, but he thought it was fun to go over and lay in the ambulance, and his friends were operating him. It was pretty funny, it was a pretty funny story, but excellent turnout by all, very much prepared by staff, and I think we did really good. Uh, in case you guys are like me, your CFR is due tomorrow, so you haven't done.
I already nailed it.
Well, I, see, someone, someone wasn't paying attention, so I won't go into it. Uh, I would like to adjourn in the memory of Frankie Farr Algier, uh, neighbor of mine for many, many years, uh, lived down the street, credible cook, uh, best fire roasted pizza I've ever had when I first moved into the neighborhood, and I really didn't know anybody, uh, came up, said, hey, come on, I'm having a slice of pizza, welcome to the neighborhood, uh, sadly missed, very active within the town.
I would like to, uh, if I can make the motion, I'd like to adjourn for Donna J Trich. She's ready to, you have behind me, her grandfather was head of the Highway Department decades ago in the sixties, her father worked for the Public Works Department, Leslie Kep, headheaded guy, uh, and I'd like to remember her. So Frank Algier, is it Frank A Algier?
No, it's Frank. But you already called him Farr, so Frank Algier.
Okay, uh, if it's agreeable, I would like to make a motion that, uh, we adjourn in memory of Frank A Algier and Donna J Trich.
Motion for, two, three, a second? All in favor? First aye.
Burns aye.
Davis aye.
Moffett aye.
Thanks for all coming. Adjourns.
Hey, hey.
You gonna be a.
No. He asked, he asked for it continued.
Yes, I asked for it, it was going to go sideways. That's, this is not going to go sideways. That was, these people are going to try to, you hit my vibe.
They're going to try to what? They're going to what?
Do what she just did.
I'm sorry.